Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Hedges.
Here.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Ms. Muskowski.
Here.
Chairman Moore.
We've been asked to the amended agenda.
Sir.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber. Ms. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood. Chairman Moore.
Hi.
We'll get straight into the budget work sessions. First up tonight, we have the special revenue, Ms. Tom Cowsery. We're on the update on the J.D. Carr forecast.
I created that whole point and then I had to change it. And I needed a new line to try to put on the wall. And so all you have is the one that isn't trying to be apologized. All right. The same factors which caused values of used vehicles to increase from 2020 to 2021 persist. The shortages of computer chips continue to impact inventory of new cars. There are too many and few of new vehicles on here lots than in 2020. The reduced supply results in higher prices for new vehicles. In 2022, the average price of a new vehicle increased to $49,000. Individuals considering purchasing a new vehicle when they are unable to obtain a new car or they can no longer afford a new car. Therefore, they keep their vehicle, reducing the supply of used vehicles causing used vehicle prices to increase. These market conditions will last through 2024. From 2020 to 2021, the value of used vehicles increased by 14%. From 2020 to 2021, in Kingway, the average value of motorcycles, cars, trucks, and vans increased by $797 to $8,240, an 11% increase. Eight hundred and eight vehicles were added to the tax rolls in 2021. In 2021, the taxes on cars, trucks, vans, and motorcycles increased 15% by $713,308. From 2021 to 2022, J.D. Carr predicts values of used vehicles increased 39%. J.D. Carr reported that 95% of vehicles will see an increase in assessed value nationwide. In 2020, the average value of a used car was $23,000. In November 2021, the average price of a used car in the United States increased to $29,000. This is significantly greater than the King William average. Cars exchange a greater increase in values ranging from 40 to 57% and truck values increased 20 to 33% on average. There are 3,913 more trucks than cars in the county. With this data, administration can create a new revenue projection model reflecting normal personal property revenue growth and factoring in how the reduced green carding to affect the number of new cars moving into the county. How the lower than national average of used vehicles, used vehicle values in Kingway, affects the overall percentage of increases in personal property assessments and how the significantly greater number of trucks compared to cars affects the overall increases in assessment values. The 1.2 million Kingway receives from the state for PPTRA will remain the same. In 2022, the PPTRA will decrease from the 27.7%. And conservative estimate, and one assumes a 20% increase in assessed values and a 22% PPTRA, an individual with a $15,000 car will see the value increase to $18,000. At the same tax rate of $3.65 per hundred, the individual's personal property taxes will increase from $395 to $512, an increase of $160. Imagine the hardship on two families of two cars. I urge the board to revise personal property tax for the Kingway citizens. That my office heard of so many citizens who received significantly higher personal property bills last November causing them severe hardship. Administration has recommended decreasing real estate tax rate by one and a half cents, but real estate values have now increased from 2021 to 2022. This one and a half cent decrease will save the average homeowner with a $204,000 property $30. This decrease would not even affect the escrow portion of the mortgage. Lowering the personal property tax rate would directly address the increase in personal property tax bills. I'm sure the county administrator has informed me, has informed more that the General Assembly passed emergency legislation allowing localities to create a new class property for vehicles. This change can occur in 2022. Previously stated prohibiting vehicles from receiving a lower personal property rate than business personal property. By reducing the rate on only passenger vehicles, the impact on over personal property revenue is reduced. This action directly address the increase in personal property values and personal property bills. Many localities are reducing the J.D. Carr assessed value by a predetermined percentage. J.D. Carr will assess vehicles as usual, then the percentage increase of increased values will be calculated. For example, if the increase in assessed values is 22%, the board can adopt a resolution to grant a 20% discount. The treasurer would apply the discount before the bills are printed and mailed. The advantage with this method is that discounts can reflect normal personal property growth and allow the county to obtain its revenue projections. Hampton, Virginia Beach, and Chesapeake have already voted to apply a 25% discount on their assessed values. I suggested to administration to eliminate the license fee for one year. This will save every vehicle owner $30. Kingway bills personal property for the current year, the license fee is for the next year. By suspending the license fee for one year, the two cycles will be in sync. This action would greatly simplify the process in Kingway County changes to personal property provision.
How many, you said Hampton, Virginia Beach, and whatever, the three counties?
Chesapeake. They've already voted to apply a 25% discount. It's been reported in the newspaper. Amelia or Augusta, Lynchburg are also applying the discount, but the rate hasn't been determined. So if you wait to adopt a discount, we can calculate all the bills and the assessments and see where we stand, and then you could adopt a percentage discount. And when people experience $200, $300 increases in their personal property tax bills after the same increases the previous year, that is so much money and it is paid at one time.
Before I ask anyone else, give everyone else a chance first.
The money from this goes to school, is that correct? Personal property. However, if we did a reduction, they would get whatever that reduction is, correct?
Say that again.
If we did a reduction in percentage, they would get wherever that is, and we wouldn't like owe this school back.
It's a split lot, right?
It's a personal property. If there was a reduction, it could come off of either one. This will end us.
Well, if we did a discount.
Percentage would come off of both.
What we would almost have to do was a discount on the assessed value as opposed to a discount on the bill. I would think for simplicity's sake, with the split lot being involved.
If we set the tax rate to, let's say, a 2020 level.
Yeah.
Do we know with the increased value and the 800 and some additional vehicles, what that tax rate might be in order to achieve the 2020 revenue?
You know, administration's going to have to look at some economic models. You know, there's 1 million, you know, there's 2 million fewer vehicles produced in 2021. Is that going to affect it, you know, that 808 vehicles? Is it going to go more? Will it be less or will it be more? Are people not holding on to their, you know, same car? And there's not commitment or there's not increasing vehicles because we just can't afford this sort of vehicle?
Completely ignore my question.
Oh, I'm sorry. What?
After repeat?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, in order to obtain, achieve the 2020 revenue with the increased value of the vehicle and the additional 818, whatever that was, additional vehicles?
Eight hundred and eight.
Have we factored in what the tax rate would be in order to achieve the 2020 or even the 2021? Does anybody understand?
Well, I think, I think, I think what we're trying to say is how can we capture the growth in the number of vehicles and what, what revenue they're bringing while also recognizing and trying to account for the precipitous rise in value of the cars generally?
I mean, I'm sure the bank's director, you know, has a model that shows personal property tax revenue increases by a certain percentage each month or each year. So values increase by a certain amount.
Well, and I think, I think it might be an impossible task to, to, to capture all of one and then capture all of another, but I think if you just, if you tried to find the average, you'd get as close as you could.
You missed your own.
But if you discounted about the average, then you'd still be bringing in the growth of the cars.
It's never, it's never going to be fair across the board to everybody.
Right, I don't think you can, I don't think you can perfectly capture that.
The largest number of people that have the two, three vehicles of brand new vehicles in their garage, they're going to get tremendous.
Right, but I think if we, if we identified the average as best we could and we decided that we wanted to, you know, reduce the amount on which, if we covered this, that we have the ability to reduce the percentage of assessed value on which we have.
Yeah, that's what Hampton and Virginia Beach are doing, they're going to take a decrease in assessed value.
And then that would, I think, accomplish what the goal would be, which is you don't want to say, well, we've had this big group of revenue, and then we want to discount this amount of revenue, you want to say that you can, you can demonstrate that we've seen this increase in the average assessed value of a car.
Yes, our best guess on setting the rates are based on the need to the county, not just getting what we can. That's.
Well, right, and I think here, it's, it's almost, it's a different exercise that we're doing almost because we do certainly want to capture that revenue growth. This exits because the cars are coming in because of the natural growth, residents coming in saying that we're seeing a real estate side. But what we don't want to do, or what we want to minimize, is a precipitous rise in the tax bill for a car that has been garage in the county several years that would otherwise be seeing a decrease in value, seeing that value rise and seeing that tax bill go up in a big, in a big way, especially since, again, we're, we're thinking that this is probably transient. And so doing it that way, discounting the assessment of value, is, I think, going to be the smarter way to go as opposed to trying to lower the rate and capture that same.
We could also increase the, the amount of tax relief. We know what we're getting from.
Right, we know, we know that we can't do, we're statutorily bound not to do that, right? We can't, we can't toss extra money towards that.
Why can't we get rid of the registration fee? Like you said, that way every person will get a discount instead of just the mandatory ones that have six new cars and the family that has no new cars isn't going to get anything.
Percentage.
That way.
Except cars, credit cards that don't pay.
No, don't pay. If you get the $30.
Well, this is, this is one of the reasons why, this is a tough one. This, yeah, because it's a weird kind of more redundant tax.
Why don't we just reduce the real estate tax more to cover this increase? Then we won't have to do anything to do this.
The only thing, we may be just doing this for more years.
Right.
Yeah. That's why we can reduce the registration fee.
I don't want to go back and have to pay real estate rate.
That's right.
Right, so yes, the point, those points, what I'm saying, you don't want to, you don't want to squeeze the real estate, try to make it for this, especially if this goes away next year because then you're going to have to raise the real estate rate. Some of us.
I think it makes sense to direct the tax reduction so that taxes that are increasing by so much. You know, I mean, real estate isn't increasing, that's actually the same, and then you have to think, you know, you'll have binary polarization where you have to do the assessment.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what, what type of adjustments we have to make if this becomes more of a, of a plateau than a peak.
And then, like J.D. Carr says through 2024, I mean, that these values will remain high through 2024. I don't know what the increase in values will be for 2022 to 2023, but the high values that are assessed now will remain through 2024.
Right, and so at that point in time, maybe we expect to start seeing a more normal trend of depreciation of cars, because we see the value of these cars drop 20% a year. Unlikely unless we have some type of recessionary pressure going on in the background.
I mean, there's so many unknowns right now. If we wait to adopt a percentage decrease in, in the assessment value, you can do it actually by the books and you can know exactly what you do if you lower the tax rate. And, you know, that's, you know, you know, hard to gauge, I guess.
Right, and I think that that's probably the smartest move is, is to, again, see what the assessed values are coming in at, see what the revenue projections look like after that, and then we can determine what we think is appropriate.
So is this, is this going to create a problem? Will we, you, or the president?
I mean, you have to make sure that our software will get to apply the discounts. I don't know. I mean, I'm going to run the J.D. Carr assessed values as I normally do. And then I could run the numbers and see the total assessed values of cars, trucks, vans, see it, but if you do, if you don't, I don't know, you'll have to check, you know, read the legislation under Mr. Asher, I can answer this. If you don't break that special class, you could keep the rates the same, but keep that special class and just apply the discount on special class.
And so the other benefit pointed out is we could apply this to residential as opposed to.
Yeah, I go to business personal property. Before business vehicles couldn't assess less than the business personal property and now they can. So.
Was this a one-time legislature or is this a written?
I think it's forever legislative, but it was, you know, introduced because of the certain situation that we're in right now in the market.
So then the next question is how do we handle our revenue? Well, can I, can I ask you, I, I know we discussed this last time, I cannot remember the answers for the live meeting right now, but when we were building the projections for, for the revenue from this tax this year, were we factoring in this type of growth or were, or thought our entity's saying you're being conservative and not factoring that in? So we have essentially some, if we see that there's going to be massive growth, that we're not essentially reducing our project, our revenue projections, that we reduce.
Factoring in the additional vehicles. Correct.
Our projections are based on 2021's assessed values.
Yeah. So you have a personal property increase from 2021 to 2022.
It was, it was an increase in revenue, but only based on new cars coming in.
It should be based on the additional 800, 800, new car, it should have additional revenue.
Or whatever, that's the way we normally use, I don't know what we use.
Well, we can do this a year at a time and not project it out in 24 because we, J.D. Carr is doing it.
You're going to have to.
I guess, you know, I'm not even sure how close they're going to be on this 20-some percent.
Can we adjust on a six-month?
I would say that would be unlikely and probably.
Well, that would be a problem because the market could completely turn around in six months, the next year.
If you were building, so more than once, maybe.
I mean, the value for 2021 is hard to determine. I mean, I don't know if they are, but if it's January 1st, 2022, the values are now, not to me, not for Kingway, but they are now, J.D. Carr knows, and once I, hey, when did you get that annual D and B download, I can send them a file and then I will know. I mean, I have to get that done, it's in the middle of May, I think, because they have to get it to the town so much earlier because they don't.
They're not coming up till then.
Well, that was the point of my question to Natasha, is that we can work with our revenue projections as they are now and wait to see what these 2021 values come in at, determine what we could live with. Because we, we projected conservatively, we did not project 10 or 20% growth.
If we decided on 18, 19% of reduction.
We wouldn't want to decide that until, yeah, I was going to say, we would have to decide that later.
After our numbers, we could decide on the discount. I mean, it was just so heartbreaking, these people coming into my office, you know, like in tears, where am I going to get an extra $150, you know? And there's quite a few people that, you know, this really, really hurts.
Is this the only items that, that it's affecting motorcycles, cars, trucks?
J.D. Carr assesses values for passenger vehicles and motorcycles are included, not boats, not motorhomes, not Mack trucks, not tow trucks, you know, those would stay in the mid, you know, tow trucks would stay in that, you know, class. Your motorhomes would stay in other personal property tax classes. You could have separate class for most, you have separate class, you know, separate class for business property, it would be a tow truck or, you know, those huge trucks that people use. We have quite a few of that trucks, that's surprising to say. You know, vehicles over 10,000 pounds or tons. It, it just, it hurts so many people. Now we're having two years in a row without getting them any, it's just, it's heartbreaking.
I think it's safe to say that we can reduce something, we just don't know.
Yeah.
By how much at this particular.
I mean, the commission or revenue association set up a survey about what different localities are doing to address the increased personal property tax assessed values. And by far, not everybody was fine with that. Like, there's quite a many people applying a discount as reducing the rate. Because this was, this survey was done before the legislation, much as the legislation was passed. Other than me, there's only two other, Prince George and Caroline, the policy suggested suspending the real estate or the vehicle license fee. Yeah, and if there is going to be extra revenue from personal property, you know, I would be, you know, be here to, you know, suspend it for a year. I mean, I have board members, two board members asking about priority personal property. That's, this is a big, big thing, so it would set us on a priority basis for that when the head of the board decides to do that.
This is true. Ms. Asher, can you tell us that, or tell me that the $30 of the tax goes to school?
Yeah.
We'd have to come up with something to cover that.
That's about.
I think it's better to go with some kind of percentage decrease per year as we move along with this.
That comes up, builds the schools too, everything goes to the school.
Personal property split, this is split lot.
So we would. The registration fee is not.
Correct, the registration fee is applied 100% to schools. I thought it's for property that's split. This kind of for property that.
Yeah. Both sides of the house. You hear that's 400,000.
How much?
400,000.
Yeah. Yeah, it's 491,000 assessed, 40,000. But it said it was $491,000 assessed from new license plates. Yeah. But, I mean, a lot were made, you know, because, you know, you know, they get rid of the.
All right, so who do we, we have an idea of when we will know that these values, so we can sort of plan in future, we can act.
But as soon as, I mean, can fix the D and B download, you know, download problem, yeah, I can.
I thought all that was fixed already.
Well, the one thing they've done, it's going to happen in April, but that D and B annual download has an error. And so development is working on that. So. I don't know when that will be. The, the D and B download always is probably moving in and out every month, but the end of the year captures all the ones that were, whatever, using on this. You know, so we really do need it to assess personal property.
Ms. Asher, if we could ask you to run a few models, between this journal and, you know, what, some what ifs, scenarios, could start and develop in those.
I mean, and then that second page with.
I'll bring it back next week.
With this, you know, you have the number of cars versus trucks. Yeah, and then it's, it's a little bit hard because you have the different rates for Kingway and, you know, West Point. Thank you very much.
We'll bring it back next week, Mr. Chairman. We may not have all the, all the data because.
Oh, no.
But I think we could apply some of the more popular ways that other localities are dealing with this and just use something to look at.
The effects on school contribution.
Right. See, none of these other localities have that issue.
Right.
You know, right. That's what you got to navigate around. Yeah, we'll get to something for next week.
Okay, that's, uh, can you hold?
Yeah, I'm just going to live here for a little bit. We, we mixed one of the items regarding the commissioner's salary request of the car so that she can leave, not have to stick around all winter summer stuff. Included in the agenda package is information regarding the salary request from the commissioner of revenue and the county administrators recommend salaries. In February 2020, the county conducted a classification and compensation review project. The goal of the review was to perform a comprehensive review of components that affect the county's compensation program, such as review of the compensation structure, determine the regional market for other locality salaries, assess the internal equity of salaries paid to comparable county physicians. Department heads were involved throughout the project. They reviewed and commented on job descriptions and pay class grade. Specific physicians were updated to allow for upward mobility within the departments by classifying positions at different grade levels, for example, deputy one, deputy two, deputy three, and deputy four. In FY '23 budget proposal, proposals information under section seven supporting documents, you will find a listing of positions, positions listed by department and grade showing title and range. And that, but that is in your binder in section seven, it should be that very first page that you see under supporting documents. And that kind of gives you an idea of where right now those positions in the commissioner's office are, are in, compared to the different positions that Ms. Tom Cowsery was comparing them to previously to, so.
I'm not sure I've got the webpage.
It's actually, it's the second page in section seven.
Imagine the deputy, chief deputy, and deputy one-on-ones.
Okay. Let's see, let's see.
Yeah.
Do you have the actual ask?
Yeah, it's in the memo. So which, or do you want to talk about a specific position or?
The request, the request is a.
It isn't a.
You're talking about a request on the memorandum. Yeah. So we do not, we do not have a, do we have a definite deputy commissioner period? We just have one and two, right?
I don't even think we have one, is June a two?
Two, three.
I think, I think we have two deputy twos and then we have a chief that. I'm pretty sure.
Both are the same. Have you confirmed that the the staff from the commissioner's office will enjoy the COLA?
Yes.
And any merit raises due.
That has been factored into the.
So what's the additional ask? So. So that's factored into the recommendation?
The county administrator recommendation is for COLA.
COLA.
Yes.
Is there an additional ask?
Yes, it would be, uh, county administrator recommends for the chief deputy forty-four, three oh nine. There the ask has been fifty-four thousand. And I can go through each of the other two also.
What are the years of service for these positions? I notice for the chief deputy has.
She has over twenty-five. And in FY twenty twenty-one, we gave, that was the year when. And we didn't even give merit control of that year to other employees. But she was one of the people that we did the comp plan, brought her up twenty-one oh seven. We gave her an increase that year in FY twenty twenty-one. To put her on at that time, the commissioner revenue, I asked where she needed to be. With the new pay classification. I believe, um, same having been here a year when we did this and she was brand new.
So she has basically two years service now, two and a half.
Suzanne? Yeah.
Any other comments?
Um, no, no comments. I mean, we just did a basic. It's it's difficult to. Just kind of big changes. We just did.
And we are expecting to go ahead and budget for FY twenty-four, um, to go ahead and do a classification study again with an outside source this time.
Okay.
Let me see if I can stick to the agenda here. All right. So we'll talk about the revenues for projection for FY twenty-three. Included in the packet is a summary of projected FY twenty-three dollar fund revenues. Real estate tax rate proposed includes a penny and a half tax deduction. All other property tax rates remain level for FY twenty-two. After hearing from the commissioner regarding possible personal property revenue increase for FY twenty-three, we ask that the board give us feedback on if the board feels decent anticipated increases should be included in projections for FY twenty-three. I think we made that decision, right? But are there any other questions about the revenue? Um, there was a chart left in the included in the package. It kind of gives you a rough idea of, you know, the increases that we're seeing for real estate with the projections. Again, projections are based on twenty twenty-one assessed values with no increase. We just not knowing what to come with, you know. Purchases of vehicles and things like that. We just left it as what we would, what we saw.
Do we know who are we adding collection for personal property at this point? Percentage what?
I do not, but I could always ask the treasurer to see if she can send us some kind of report.
So you know, I mean, if they're really struggling, are they able to even pay it?
Yep, I can bring that in the next week.
Based on previous years of your experience, where should we be by now?
Okay.
Gut feeling.
I have, I'll contact that for you.
What's your level of confidence, let's say, is extremely high, ninety-nine percent? Nothing's gonna jump up.
Revenue is all. You know, we're conservative in our budget.
Holding her breath every week.
Yeah. I don't think anybody knows that. When you said that, I think he was getting ready to say yes until you said jump up.
That's good to be confident.
We thought long and hard about the, about the decrease. Obviously, based on expenditures, the board has. Options to generate more revenue as far as that. Take a long look at that, but at the same time, that's, that's all you are.
Do you have a comment?
Were we, are we gonna discuss the fuel costs?
Yeah, that's next on the list.
Okay, I was thinking.
Yeah, I was able to pull down from the U S Energy Information Administration for further insight into the fuel cost increase of late. The price of regular gasoline and diesel have increased from February seventh to March fourteenth by thirty-two point nine percent for diesel and twenty-five point five percent for gasoline. Based on department's usage today, this fiscal year and estimated remaining amount through this fiscal year. The fuel price increase could potentially raise projected expenses for fuel in FY twenty-three by fifty-three thousand five hundred seventy-three.
For everybody.
Yes, and included was a chart that kind of gave you the numbers of.
That's just the rest, that's just the rest of this.
That would be for no, that's for FY twenty-three. Fifty-three thousand is what I would need to increase if we, if we wanted to go. We're gonna gamble then, yeah, if we leave it the way it is.
When was the last time you took?
Uh, I did it as of February, uh, March fourteen, so. Hey, like you said, the prices are already coming down in that little bit of a ton. So that's what I'm coming to you for is your recommendations on would you want me to increase fuel expenses for FY twenty-three or just?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think because just figuring it, I mean, I know I looked at the sheriff's only because I don't, I don't know which product I'll use in gallons, but. With a somewhat reduced force, he was, he used like twenty-five thousand gallons. That came out with a new prices to be good and he was paying fifty-some thousand a year. It would go over on or around on.
Right.
So in that respect, and then you still don't have a part. In i- in those figures that I'm talking about.
Right.
I think you need to try to find somewhere.
Yeah, so he.
Is it, is it gonna, at some point, be put in their budget so they know what they're dealing with?
Yes, yes, if we do.
You know what I mean, versus that you can overhand a line item.
No.
So, so Bill, you're saying that it's doubled? Well, look at, look at the cost. So we're looking, yeah, but we're only looking at twenty-five percent for gas, thirty-two point nine for diesel. So you're saying that their cost has doubled and it's almost a hundred thousand? That's what we figured on. What the, what the golden rate was at that point.
That twenty-five percent.
Well, that's the, this, the fifty-three thousand overall.
Well, right.
Couldn't be right.
The twenty-five percent increase is based on February and March. So certainly year over year.
Okay, so we're not, this is just month for month or we looking at year over year? So a twenty-five percent increase. For the year or thirty-two point nine for diesel, still wouldn't equate to, to what he's saying, that, you know, the color stays the same, what?
So the timeframe that I pulled was with the twenty-five percent is kind of where it was peaking at the highs too, I feel like.
So you included by last, you included the sheriff's, sheriff's department, fire and.
Yeah, so the sheriff and just the sheriff's office, this is not animal control, just the sheriff's office. Um, we had recommended fifty-five thousand for fuel for him and with this exercise, we would recommend eighty-seven, eight hundred ten for him.
And how many gallons were you figuring at that time?
I didn't figure it by gal. Hold on, hold on, I guess I did.
Yeah.
No, I did not. I figured it by whatever the percentage for the regular fuel, the twenty-five and a half, I just added that to what I see where they're gonna be at the end of this year. And I just times it by that. I increased it by twenty-five point five.
So let me break up, sure, well, if. You've never heard the term tactics, techniques, procedures? It's how you run your suite. Is there anything, any efficiencies that, that can be gained by changing policy or changing procedures? Without affecting your operations? That's just a. Off the wall.
Off the wall right now, I'd say no. We have unfilled positions now, but once we get those positions filled, that's, that's more difficult on the road. In historically, parking, if that's the, the angle you're going at, parking has never really worked. Then the folks get upset, usually crime rates increase if they know that you're not patrolling. Now, I don't know what percent, they generally do go up so.
About for the, the rest of the county, Flea River efficiencies that we can impose, I hate to get to that point, but. If we get to. The checkbook starts running low, can we impose certain restrictions? Doubling off on trips, limiting trips, et cetera, et cetera. That's draconian, but. Not making two or three trips a day to a certain destination around county, try, try to meet every time you want trip. Yeah, there's, there's.
Can you also recommend that really look at the fact of sending an ambulance and fire truck to most of these calls? I know that does happen a lot and it does get expensive.
Yeah, I. I'd like to see a two-pronged approach of us, but we probably, we need to identify some more revenues we can put towards this. We also need to. Identify opportunities to save. Or we can, at least until this all sorts itself out because as the doctor said, this could be over a month, it could go right back up, last all year, we really don't know, so.
What is, what is our, what is our date that we have to make this decision? You have to make this decision.
It's not thirty years.
So I, I think what, what I'm seeing here, but, but what I'm thinking here, we're looking at this fifty-three, five seventy-three number. And there's concern that that might, number might not be sufficient to capture all of the potential costs. But I say if we say we want to identify, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue that we can put towards this and then make up the rest. Again, if we just kind of operate with that until we can't. And on the other end, hope that things break the other way, that they break hard the other way. Then, yeah, we're gonna have to really, I think, scrap down some stuff. Press might have to get a little bit taller than I like.
It really would, we still could use other side.
It, we, we can't.
Hoping, hoping that.
Right.
It doesn't go long term, this is not an angle, is what I would hope, using that.
I'm trying to be optimistic.
Well, I am too. Well, the world effect on everything right now, I'm not so sure it's anything.
Obviously, the ones that we need to keep on the road, the most are the sheriff's office and fire. So that's, that's where we need to focus the resources on making sure they got what they need to do to do their jobs.
How often do you get reports from? Is it monthly that staff turns in? That there's a monthly? Maybe a little more scrutiny on that.
Yeah, definitely. We just. So we run, we can run reports, generate all kinds of things from that banger.
Just keep a real close eye on express costs.
What's mileage reimbursement at right now?
Fifty-three, twenty-five, nine?
Is it that low? I thought it was higher, none of those in the seventies. It's what?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three percent. So I mean.
And last year maybe.
Okay, at one point it had gone way up, but it would have always been in the fifties for a long time.
Sure, when we're looking at, at fuel cost, how much of that is taxed that you don't pay? When we're looking at a gallon of gas. You know how much the tax rate is? Okay. Is there, is there a contract?
Yes.
And is, is it, has it had a certain rate?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Ashcraft, they actually talked to me today about like just possibly getting that out maybe to see if we could get that pricing.
They are giving you a contract this day? So they don't even get prices.
No, we're in a contract with, you know, the little cards that we use.
Oh, no, no, I, when you say contract, I, I think with all the twenty-five gallon, you know, back in the day. And, and it's fixed at that. And actually, Pat Coe got in trouble with that, with us in the town because then the gas shot up.
Yeah, no, we can't get that.
They're paying for that stuff and charging the customer almost daily, I think.
Right, and but we are getting really good pricing through state contracts, so.
State federal gas taxes right now for this fiscal year is forty-seven point four cents per.
Any other questions?
FY twenty-one anticipated county on the time fund balance is eight million forty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-three. Thirty-one percent of FY twenty-one expenditures is what that comes out to. The FY twenty-three proposed budget requests using a total of one million eight hundred ninety-five thousand ninety-three. To fund the FY twenty-three expense for reassessment contract and to fund various capital improvement items. And that total that we're requesting in the proposed budget is one million six hundred seventy-four thousand forty-three.
What did he say?
Twenty, twenty-four percent is what you're from down. If you spend every dollar.
Page two of this memo, this has been going up up here.
Everything is following the memo.
This? Okay.
So we got from thirty-one to twenty-four. The auditors finally said when they came just years back, they said it was supposed to be around fifteen, sixteen percent.
Twenty percent.
It's twenty percent.
That's a local adoption.
Yeah, it doesn't have.
We started, we didn't have any. Well, there's.
Four, four thousand is twelve to fifteen.
That's right. Yeah, that was generally, you know, twelve to fifteen percent is what that we, we had set that we wanted, then it would be twenty percent cash flow. The reason we would set that was because we identified that as being the level at which we had sufficient cash flow to cover the collections here. Right, since we collect basically, you know, twice, two big collections annually.
That's the old signboard.
Right, right, right. So you need to fund there to be able to cover the actual cash expenditures that are coming in and out because your, your, your expenditure is going to you. But your collections come in June, December, and now part of January, so.
And that number is gonna be twenty-four percent?
Yes.
And that's if you fund everything in the capital plan. Just the way Tommy would be, not, not every project is funded a hundred percent.
It's a comfortable cushion. It's.
I think Mr. Ashford's point is that even funding everything in the capital budget doesn't necessarily mean that all of that is gonna be spent in the fiscal year. So that's it, everything times out to where we spend every dollar, we perfect with the capital plan this fiscal year. Probably had a little bit more built-in precision than that, but even a twenty-four percent. That's, that's expending off of what we expected to be at the end of the fiscal year, it's not also accounted for any. Addition there maybe to the fund of the end of the fiscal year. My comment would be that we have some capital needs that we need to take care of. Obviously, one of the biggest chunks of this, and it's a priority for, for us for a long time, and I'm just getting that internet product going. So, um, you know, again, there's sufficient cushion there just based on what we had and what we, what we expect will come out of final financials. And again, we, we've got additional cushion in there, we're concerned about getting close to that twenty percent number in the fact that we're probably not going to be spending all, every dollar of this fiscal year. And also, here's, you know, the life, it's just based on the historical growth of the fund, that we'll see additional growth of the fund once we close out this kind of fiscal year. And it doesn't, it doesn't really give me any concern that we're, we're, you know, flying close to the sign rate kind of that, I think it's.
And later in this evening, I will talk to you more about the funding sources that we have, what we would intend to use that assigned balance for within the capital improvement plan two for FY twenty-three.
Of course, this is not much to do with the unassignment, but we've got to keep in mind that the ARF fund to fund that, it is the last budget year that we'll have ARF for those.
You'll have them in twenty-four also.
For six, five, five?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was ending.
I think we, we mapped it out to basically where it acted like the safer grant code, right? We did like basically three years a hundred percent, like what we would have done if we had gotten the safer grant, we didn't.
So this is, we, we're two years in.
This is our first year, CARES was one year now.
So.
We're, we're two years into what is ultimately a four year because we could use CARES for part of it.
Yeah, if you go to section seven, it'll give you the breakdown. You're right, in twenty, so we are using it in FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three for the fire and EMS seventy-four, but that's it. And then in twenty-four, we still have a little time remaining, but nothing related to be talking about.
I need to. And then. Yeah, keep in mind there's a request of what, six more or seven more? If that goes.
For the safer?
Yeah.
Seven, seven.
Yeah, no, because that's the thing too, the safer is only gonna pay for new hires, it's not gonna pay for the seven we just hired.
Right, but the request was thirteen overall, and we don't have six.
The teach would be new hires, right? Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, and at some point, that's gonna run out. We gotta write and check, so.
Yeah, and that's something that we will be discussing after, you know, this budget process is more information about that, just what's the plan? You know, i- if we do get the safer grant, how do we, 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 we wanna sit down and talk more about that, how historically, you know, not historically, but. Five years from now, how are we going to pay for it if you hired another six to save it, plus we have a seventh ARF, so. That's gonna be for discussion and discussion of how are we gonna use the staff we have? We, we, we wanna look at, you know, the schedule, you know, how are, how are we utilizing that number of people to cover the area? We have some, I, I, we have one assigned, didn't we?
Okay, contributions to outside organizations.
Included in the package this evening is a summary of the outside organizations' requests for funding for FY twenty-three budget. The majority of organizations requested level funding. My intent tonight is highlight new requests and additional funding requests. The county has received several new funding requests from outside agencies that have not been funded in previous years. These agencies include Distort Society of West Point for ten thousand. This report will assist the museum to continue its growth. Bridges of Change Domestic Violence has requested five thousand from King William County, Charles City, Town of West Point, and Uken. King and Queen requests us three thousand five hundred. Thrive Virginia has requested five thousand, which represents point two percent of agency's operating budget. Additional local government funding includes one thousand from the Town of West Point and twenty thousand from Charles City. Virginia Career Works has requested four thousand two eighty-seven, which is based on King William County population of seventeen one four eight times point two five per capita. Additional funding requests include Monkey Regional Library has requested a total of five hundred ninety-three thousand one sixty-eight, which is an increase of one forty-eight five seventy-one. The increase is based on an increase for salary and benefits, books and materials, and other operational costs. Upper King William Senior Citizen Center in previous years received fund from King William County for two thousand. Since the pandemic, the state center has been, not been open, but they anticipate reopening next year. The organization has requested the county to fund them for FY twenty-three, two thousand dollars. Mountain Peninsula Juvenile Attention Center, Merrimack Center, has requested thirty-two thousand six hundred twenty-three, which is an increase of five thousand nine hundred fifty-six. The increase is based on King William County average of the service for the previous five years. Middle Peninsula Local Probation and Pretrial Service has requested twenty-three thousand one hundred, which is an increase of three thousand nine hundred. The increase is based on FY twenty-one actual placement and utilization of the program by King William County. Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center has requested one billion seven hundred seventy thousand three eighty-four, which is, which is an increase of thirty-five thousand four fifteen. The increase is based on FY twenty-one inmate dates. Three Rivers Health District requests for one hundred fifty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-four. This is an eighteen thousand two hundred twenty-four increase from FY twenty-two. The increase is due to the JLA RC Medicaid rate change done by the General Assembly in spring twenty-twenty-one. Mangoing Fire and Rescue requests of ninety-four thousand nine hundred seventy-seven, which is an increase of two thousand twenty-nine. They are not included on this chart that you guys are looking at, I'm sorry. I a lot of times consider them an outside agency, so that, I apologize. We will be talking about them later on too, so let's just skip them. Med Flight has requested one thousand two hundred, which is an increase of nine hundred. This increase is based on home missions for King William County over the last four years. King William County had fifteen missions out of the two thousand seven hundred sixty-nine regional. Peninsula Emergency Medical Services has requested two thousand seven hundred forty-six, which is an increase of five hundred nineteen. The increase is based on King William County population growth. And BIPSA is the agency that provides regional solid waste management service to King William County. Overall, there was an increase of four hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred eighty, or fourteen point three percent regionally, for Essex, King and Queen, King William County, Matthews, and Middlesex County. The increase is due to salary adjustments to maintain staffing at current levels. The cost for FY twenty-three is anticipated to increase by a total of one hundred nineteen thousand two hundred thirty-nine of King William County. And later on, it actually will be talked to you about some options they have provided to us if we wanted to increase, um, um, hours. The final organization that I will mention tonight that has requested an increase is Bay Transit. Bay Transit has requested twenty-eight thousand two hundred ninety-eight, which is an increase of eight hundred twenty-five. The three percent increase is due to rising costs of transportation. The request that I've talked about, um, that, that the agency itself is not necessarily what the county administrator has recommended. Um, but you, you'll see that in your chart for the general fund, what he has recommended also.
Okay, so right now, everything that we project covers all of these requests.
Not the depart, of the agency requests, no, we are not funding. We will not be, uh, the county administrator has recommended that we level fund the Monkey Regional Library. That we do not fund any of the, the new requests except for Virginia Career Works. And that's, that's it? That pretty much summarizes.
So thrive, nothing?
Correct.
So Med Flights include the increase?
Yeah, Med Flight did include the increase.
So.
Fire and EMS, I apologize again, I was trying to keep all the outside agency season one thing.
No, I just, I don't know, a thirty-two thousand a trip or thirty-five thousand a trip? Which nine hundred dollars? That's what it costs you today. Yeah.
That can't be right. Actually, Air Force One doesn't cost that much.
I've, I've actually heard, um, one of my friends, his wife was, was one and then it was more than that. Charge to the insurance.
Right, I heard there was a famous story at Southwest where they do car building and the guy paid like a hundred and ten thousand dollars because he got that for a hard.
Flexible, flexible, indeed.
It's gone up dramatically, uh. Those that knew Jason Harlow, when he had his first episode, it was five grand. It was thirty something.
This needs to be something we need to jump on our reservations about, this is. I'm very familiar with the cost of fix homes.
Sure, right now, pretty correct on that, these things. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So there's a difference between Med Flight and Life Evac. Med Flight is a state helicopter, Life Evac is not. I think that's where the charges are.
The charges, okay.
From the antiprimes.
Yeah.
Well, the call was made, the first one to get stairs, picks it up.
It was available. They do fly a lot, I'm sure.
The fire chief is requesting to speak.
Chief, I'm yours.
Lou, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I apologize. Uh, when you call for a helicopter, it depends on who you call. Uh, their services and their billing is irrelevant to who comes. Uh, their mission is always gonna be based around who, uh, you call. So when you call them, they're going to respond regardless of how the billing turns out on the backside. So, uh, Med Flight is, uh, established by the state and they generally don't charge. And, uh, Life Evac is one of the many who offer services in the region who do charge. However, uh, recently, Life Evac has, uh, created a program for offset billing. And if you guys would like a more detailed explanation of that, I'd be glad to get it to you. But people who we call a helicopter for in general, just speaking, um. It doesn't matter what the cost is, because when you call for a helicopter, their life is in jeopardy. So we gen, we almost always default to who can get to that patient and get them to the center they need to go to the fastest to ensure that their life continues.
That decision is made by the on-scene senior individual, right, sir?
Sorry about that, I muted myself. Uh, no, sir, uh, usually that is always managed by dispatch unless the on-scene commander makes a different decision. Uh, I know that often you will hear somebody ask for a specific helicopter, but in most situations, the request goes to dispatch, dispatch. Dispatch is the helicopter who was outlined for them to call. And to, I'm not real sure where that lies right now, um, between Life Evac and Med, Med Flight. I believe that we're kind of in the middle with that because of the, the billing offset that Life Evac put in place this past year. We have loosened up the reins on always calling for Med Flight, because sometimes Med Flight can be extended, uh, flight times, uh, on-scene times, which puts a patient in jeopardy. So, you know, it's kind of, it kind of dwindles down to what's the right choice for the patient and, and that will roll back onto the on-scene supervisor's shoulders, like you said. But initially, it should be a list.
Uh, chief, what you're saying is, you're not talking about. You're, you're talking about dispatch determines who to call, correct? That's all you're saying. They're not making a decision on whether to call a helicopter.
Oh, no, sir, no, sir. The on-scene supervisor makes the call to call a helicopter.
I wondered how they would know, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, the dispatcher shouldn't have the weight of asking for a helicopter on their own shoulders.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So basically, the dispatcher looks at and lets, and picks out a. Picks out one and calls them? Is that the way that works? Or was it related?
Usually, that's the way it will work unless the on-scene supervisor, whoever that might be, the incident commander says, call Med Flight. If they say call Med Flight, the dispatcher is gonna call Med Flight. They, they're not there to take the responsibility of who to call if the incident commander is demanding something from the scene. Okay, no problem. I just, I don't want undue, uh, responsibility being placed on the dispatchers there. They do everything they can to help us, but it, you know, ultimately, it rolls down to the incident commander.
Ready to move on to the next thing? So the new positions, the total cost for the new positions request for FY twenty-three from the general fund is one hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred twelve. This amount is salary plus benefits. And you have the listing in your memo, um, so that would be for the payroll specialist, records manager for the Commonwealth attorney, and two dispatchers for E nine one one.
Could I ask Jeff a question about the dispatches? Jeff, it looks like we have eleven dispatchers at this point in time, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're asking for two more?
That's correct.
What type of hours do these dispatchers work?
They work twelve-hour shifts.
Twelve-hour shifts. So you do physically have coverage right now?
Yes, sir. Sometimes it's tight, we have to.
Do you?
We pay a lot of overtime right now to make sure that we have it covered.
Yeah. If you had to make a choice between two more dispatchers and equal pay for the sheriffs as compared to fire and EMS, what would be your answer?
Well, that's a hard question to answer.
We're already getting the equal pay.
We haven't, we haven't approved that budget.
Yeah, we haven't approved it, but it's.
I know, that's, that's.
Saying. Hasn't been approved yet.
Yeah.
A lot of cuts can still be made.
So.
Would one piece of this?
I, I don't know that I can honestly answer, answer the question.
But basically, we doing okay with a lot? If they work in twelve-hour shifts.
We're, we're making a decision.
You're working, you're working through, uh, twelve-hour shifts. Uh, how many work per shift?
Right now, we have three. Let me make sure. Right now, we just, we just short-handed right now. So on a normal ship, we have three in the day, with the two of the supervisor, and three in the evening until midnight, and then it's two after midnight. The problem is right now, people need time off, or they have to take off for holidays, or whatever. We don't have enough people to cover that. And we're, we're paying a lot of overtime for people to come back in and work, and that's, that's why we're asking that, that overtime is killing us.
Well, where I came from, it was always cheaper to work people overtime, or it was to hire, even at premium, but.
And maybe it was a lot of other parts involved. You wear your people out and then. You wear your people out, and then I don't know about that. Look at me, I'm getting out.
If you're doing twelve hours and then you want to work overtime, how, how overt are they going to be just to get a part of that?
Well, they, they're on a rotating schedule like, like fire and EMS, they're working three-twelves, but end in with two, two all, two days off? Okay.
Sheriff, one more question, deal with that. Are y'all getting tied up on, don't you have to stay on the phone to render first aid?
So, yeah, with the EMD training, they have, yes, they, they must remain on the line with the caller until help arrives on scene. And they're given instructions, first aid, CPR, whatever, until that medic unit, fire unit, whatever arrives on scene.
So they can't really hang up anymore?
And, and not knowing what's going to happen with the Marcus bill, and I think they kind of pushed that out. And that was, that was another factor, you know, dispatcher would be tied up on a phone with a mental health crisis trying to find, or, or while the mental health worker is trying to find bench space for it to evaluate, and we have to remain on the line until that's decided. But thankfully, I think after the last I've heard, and that's been pushed out, and nothing been decided on the Marcus work of this coming here. But that's coming down the road, I don't know. And we may, we may not have to do anything, you know, to go with that forty thousand population threshold. We might have to do anything different than what we're doing now. There's all kinds of factors in that when we ask for this, but back to the, you know, we, we are really struggling to maintain people in that seat to answer those calls and dispatch the fire rescue. You know, it's more than just picking up the phone and saying, you know, "What's your emergency?" Then they've got a dispatcher call, they've got all the radio traffic. While other nine-one-one calls are coming, look, a traffic accident, for example. A traffic accident, three sixty, thirty generates a lot of nine-one-one calls while they're still trying to dispatch fire units and rescues, they're still answering those nine-one-one calls.
These two additional people are not going to allow you to, to man any more people than those twelve-hour shifts.
It, it will help us maintain eleven, if we have.
In other words, you, you, you're looking at maybe having more than three on each of those twelve-hour shifts or more. Is that your?
It could be a goal to have three around the clock, yes. But more important to make sure that when those folks take off, you know, that we have, we have enough coverage in there.
What is your average number of years in the department? You had some retirements this past year.
There are a lot of retirements in the last few years, so right now, I have a very, I wouldn't say young dispatch staff, but they're, you know, I've got maybe a ten, ten, fifteen year. On someone, quite a few viewers right now, we're in a high process now, so it's not there yet.
The attrition is typically low, though?
Yes, the dispatch is.
Are there any HR formulas that we can double check?
So.
That's a, that's a HR question going on, going on you. Just to check the formulas, we have a twelve, we have a twenty-four hour operation with X amount of calls and sheriff's numbers. Eight hundred and thirteen fire EMS calls, nineteen hundred and forty-three police calls in twenty twenty-one. So it's incrementally increasing over here. I'm sorry, seven thousand eight hundred and ninety police calls, sorry, for twenty twenty-one. So that's a, that's a substantial increase. And I can only project that it's going to be worse and we grow.
So the VIPSa proposed budget does not include any more days. If the board would like to consider additional ways available to citizens, VIPSa has given county two options. Option one is to reopen F Worth sign on Wednesday and reopen the landfill sign on Sunday. This would be an increase of twenty-one thousand to the budget request always submitted. Option two is F Worth, BFW, and landfill sites would open six days, all closed on Thursday. This option would be an additional expense of fifty thousand five hundred to the budget request.
All right, what page do we need on there?
Well, they've already asked for, how much of an increase over last year? I'm sure it's.
Hundred and twelve thousand.
Additional, just not operating normally because of wage increase and other expenses.
That's why we didn't really put more days or higher costs.
F Worth is a problem, being closed three days. But that's just worth twenty-one thousand dollars.
Well, it wouldn't be, it's eleven hours an hour, basically. So if you wanted to reopen one site, you know, one a day, ten-hour operating day would be.
So it's.
Well, it's one hundred and twelve thousand, I'll increase just to keep it as it is.
Right, correct.
But if you reopen F Worth and not the landfill. It was a big problem when we cut it, I'll tell you that, because the idea that was pitched to me was, I know what we'll do, we'll close the landfill and BFW and additional day a week.
I know it's an awful world question. Half a day, with the impact, would the impact be the same if you have to bring in a person, open it up?
The best I can, again, it seems like it's pretty good, and I imagine it's eleven hours an hour, and the question is, do they have somebody that's on the work, you know? Half a day, eleven hours.
Would, yeah, would they do it on that?
Maybe open one half a day, do the other open half a day?
I think, I'm just more.
Why are you harshing them down?
Well, look, I'm, I'm saying, let's, let's do, let's do whole measures or none at all here in this case. I don't think that half a day is, but. There's enough people that don't know the schedule to stand.
It's hard to set a schedule, isn't it?
I actually went to F, well, F Worth today and they were close. Every time I look for it, I can't find it.
It is hard, I'm just asking, could you make that a little more easy? A little easier, it is.
It was a schedule.
It is difficult to come. I don't know why, it just is. And certainly, when we start working on a, another site in the county, we need to fix all of this.
Well, you're right. I, I think the biggest thing that we need to fix right now is Centurion. That's, that's our, our big, big problem. I don't see F Worth really ever, but I imagine that it takes a lot of load because of Central Garage, you know, BFW roads. I think it means, and that's, you know, again, that's taking extra load from landfill being closed now, which is again, not necessarily a high and low end side, but.
One of the things, if we could get upwards, upgraded, Mr. Rattlet had promised more or less that we were going to get a tire. Have you seen that?
But I would say that for this year's purposes, with, with the already big increases we're seeing just on there alone. I don't, I don't see pursuing additional days. And again, as nice as additional days would be for some people, I think until we fix Central Garage, it's all half better.
Everyone almost agree? Unfortunately. What, three years now?
Oh, yeah, longer than that.
How, how have you experienced the, the level of pressure before the holdup? I think F Worth has gotten better.
Only, if you don't want to be there when they're removing a dumpster and replacing the next one. It will back up, will back up into F Worth Road. So bad, so, so one, one is already.
Oh, yeah. We don't have too much trouble with it.
Biggest thing is, then we emptying the containers that are.
Right, that's the big problem we had, this BFW chance to get forgotten about, and so Sunday, by the time I'm squirreling in there at five twenty-five, it's pretty full.
Yes, Sunday was, she was waiting for the truck to get there to change now, because it was full.
So without additional resources, and he talked about how much they were struggling to resource to do polls like that, he opened another day a week. He's activating that process, so it's just.
I'm optimistic that things are looking better. People are coming back to work, I hope.
Key to my capital?
Sure.
Well, good, in fact, this evening is a list of capital requests from various departments. The funding sources for these capital expenditures is also included. From utilities fund, we would want to use forty-five thousand for utility truck replacements. From the proffers, we would use a total of two hundred thousand towards VIPSa convenience site, library design, and recreation park expansion. The capital funds rolling forward from FY twenty-two include one million twenty thousand one hundred and ninety. These funds will pay for Motorola radio replacements, assisted broadband projects, project costs, brush trucks, the fire EMS for King William County, not purchased in FY twenty-two, and assist the water project costs. The CIP infrastructure funds that are on hold will also roll forward for the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand to assist with the broadband project. ARPA funds in the amount of two million would assist with the broad jet, broadband project. We would procure a utility bond for the water project. And then one million six hundred seventy-four thousand forty-three from the unassigned fund balance would be utilized for court of security system, emergency backup batteries at the courthouse, key card locks at admin building, EV car charging station at the courthouse, farmer's market, King William County fire turnout here, West Point and Main Vic volunteer fire and rescue capital, King William County rescue light packs and Lucas devices, King William County Fire and Rescue SCBA, the ballpark, ballfield improvements, riverfront development, vehicle purchases, information technology, HVAC and roofing projects, McAllister and Juvenile Building repairs, and the generator at the enrichment, at the regional animal shelter.
Did you have an EV drone?
It is, it's in there for sixteen thousand dollars.
I thought we were going to push that off to.
I just don't know, most of the, unless you've got the hanging unit, and that's not it, at sixteen thousand. I doubt it's going to charge your car completely up, but.
This, this was a request from an assistant judge, is that?
No, from a judge.
From a judge. And it would be sole access, man? Or, or, okay. Is that the way?
Yes, I guess, and I don't know anybody else that has electric vehicles, but whoever would pull up and plug into it would be the ones that you utilize them now. I just don't know if the, the back, and the price of that one would really charge up the vehicle in, in six or eight hours. A lot of them take all night for those. That's like a home unit, I think.
So that would be a perk.
I'm not going to say that. And down the road, we probably are going to have to offer some of that, if they really continue to go to electric vehicles. I'm skeptical on that. I think hybrid's a little bit more realistic, but that's my opinion.
Where did we get sixteen thousand dollars from?
Our facilities coordinator put it out there, and she, she reached out to me and worked with them, and also another electrician page electrician, I believe, and came up with what the cost would be.
Did they look at what's their power wise?
Yes, they, they did decide things.
Does it require two thirty?
Yeah, yeah. At least the home ones, I know that.
So if I'm doing loads of my really nice extension cord, that wouldn't suffice.
It won't charge it up, then.
No one does it take to charge traditionally one of these.
It depends on the vehicles.
It depends on the watt. It's not, it's not like pulling into a gas station.
No, I mean, Kenny. My dad just bought one, and they can, his can get, can go from twenty-five to seventy-five on, on one of the Tesla fast charters in like two hours. So, you know.
If you're going on a trip in an electric vehicle, you have planned your, your, your route.
Pretty, pretty much like you used to do these. At one time, you had two of that, I don't know.
So can we get a little information, this judge, how far does she travel? Is it possible that she may be assigned somewhere else one day? I don't know how that works with she.
She will probably be here, sure, correct, maybe six years is their assignment, correct? Generally, when they're voted in.
I think that sounds right.
And she's assigned to the JGR court. She is the JGR judge. And I don't remember where, where this Jane City County, but somewhere we was born, she did.
The brush fire truck, is that real, unless it'd be able to purchase one for thirty thousand?
We're, we're, a time for a grant for that, too.
One thing that was going back and forth this morning, radios, Motorola radios, I know they have us by certain body parts, but what can be done? Do we have your alternates? You, you quoted fifteen hundred per radio per year?
Seventeen hundred, actually, per radio is what we pay right now for annual service on each radio, yes. When you put in the handover contract and then Motorola, it, it is seventeen hundred dollars a radio.
Has anyone ever looked into that a little bit?
Yes.
I know you have.
Well, according, according to the split levy bill, we are required to supply radio service for firing EMS, not, not the sheriff's department. Correct?
That's according to the dispatch agreement that we have with the town of West Point?
No, that, that, oh. Well, yeah, that is part of, yeah, that is part of.
You're not required to, to provide it to Westmore Police Department, which are the volunteer fire departments.
It's ours, organizational, but our county, we, we supply that, yes.
According to something in this book, we were supplying town of West Point and police force.
No.
It's in here.
Yes, we, we pay their service agreement.
And we're also paying a fee for.
I thought that's for the service, aren't they paying for their own radio, sure?
That was my understanding, that they were paying.
If they're replacing, yes, they're, if they're replacing the equipment, they would pay for it, but we pay for the annual service agreement on it with Motorola and handover.
We're also paying the service. We're paying the service for the. We're paying the service for the police department, too.
Correct, every radio that is in, yes.
Why shouldn't, why wouldn't that be a town responsible?
I agree.
That's the way it's always been. I know this, come on.
No, in this one, I would send everybody to their ask question.
Well, it's, for years, they were on, were loving it, and that didn't work, so I mean, this system, how old is it now, sure?
Um, I, I don't recall right off, something I did, maybe.
Something around twenty fourteen, maybe?
Sounds right.
Jeff, you have it broken down, I don't know what page it's on now, but because what we were paying for their police department was fifty-some thousand, wasn't it?
Fifty-four thousand.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Now, you're not talking radio, you're talking service, right?
Service, per radio, so that's. Service, per radio, so that's what we do.
Per radio, I guess, not the radio itself.
Motorola and Hanover have provided us the listing a couple of years back where they gave us who has what radios when we started this project for Motorola.
Eight seven, section two. Fifty-four, four forty-seven town.
Yeah. That's in section two.
Fire E N S is fine, I don't have any problems with that, but it's just odd that we're paying for the towns.
Well, it's probably fifty thousand is cheap and then sure they.
Where, it's also a charge in there for the town itself, isn't it?
Correct, um, the, the town office has, town, West Point admin has six radios and that cost, that work, you know, the seventeen, seventeen oh one forty-six is what per radio. Um, that equals ten thousand two hundred eight.
Yeah, I just can't get the.
Just I have a request that this be, we want to give Mr. It was more.
So that was in section two?
It's section two, page seven.
Maybe look at that, sure.
We don't know if there's any way to look at alternate contracts or.
We're, we're anticipating the handover costs to come down this year, however, we're also anticipating Motorola to go up.
Is, is that something we can throw out to, maybe they go? Throw it out there and see what other states are using? Or is it based on the, it's not based on the Motorola network, they're using a state, local, regional network?
Right, so we pay a hundred and thirty thousand to Motorola for the annual service and because we have to utilize Hanover for our system, we pay three hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty-two. So that's the biggest chunk of it is Hanover, so as soon as we can go live with our new project, Hanover is willing to negotiate that amount and, but we will not know until that tower, the, the new towers.
But it's not totally separate when, when you say that.
You're not. No, we're not going to be completely separate.
Because that's very expensive.
We still will have to utilize them.
So this was all federally mandated stuff that happened, um, in the early twenty teens, everybody that was on low band UHF frequencies, that reclaimed all that, wanted us off, wanted us on the seven hundred, eight hundred megahertz spectrum. So that's where we had to get, and so we looked at two different things at the time because there were two different options available to us, and that's it. It was Hanover and it was the radio system jointly with King Queen. Um, Hanover uses Motorola for theirs, King Queen uses Tate. There, so in order to switch at this point, if you want to switch, it'd be determined that they're more favorable terms, and we determined at the time, it's pouring out in just raw numbers, that the Hanover system was more favorable for us by nature, I think we since grown their system, they've brought on more subscribers than they brought in Essex, they brought in Millsix. I think there was somebody else, but I can't remember who, but I think at least those two localities. Could be that this number is slightly flipped, at this point in time now, you would have to get all the radios, you'd have to get all new, I think, all new systems that dispatch, um, would have to go in, so you would have to go all that and get all. I'm, I, I don't know, a data, I'm, I'm not a network engineer, like I said, that I don't know, but I do know that it would be, it wouldn't be just as easy as saying, I'm not using you, I'm using you, it wouldn't be like going sprint T O, it would be much more involved. And still, to the best of my knowledge, our only options are Hanover and King Queen.
And Hanover was make, had a lot more coverage up on the upper end, correct? It's what it helped, that's right.
And we are heavily invested in the Hanover system right now, we're in the middle of putting towers online with the Motorola system, we, we are heavily invested.
So one way or another, it was going to be expensive and remain expensive. Um, you know, we knew that it was going to cost several hundred thousand dollars a year, every year, it was going to cost that much no matter what. And at the time, Hanover A had a better offer because they were more robust and established system. Um, and B, they offered the, the base of the back of the Motorola, which is pretty, pretty much the most trusted name in, in the industry. So, um, you know, those were the two biggest reasons that we ultimately decided to go with Hanover. But again, this, this isn't one of those contracts that you can just flip on and off or just switch from one to another. Sorry.
I'm asking, who is the county's subject matter expert? I think, I'm sorry, my, mine was on my microphone. Our subject matter expert for our radio system.
Oh yeah.
Well, the, the captain was the, uh.
Well. We, we've been involved with this from the very beginning, initially there were, there were consultants hired by the county who were on, on that interest. None of us are experts in the radio system, but we, we know where we are, where we've been. Initially, there were two, there were two choices we had that Travis hit on was the hair system, which King Queen went through, or the Motorola system with Hanover. King William candidate at that time said, we can't afford for us to do our own standalone system, therefore we had to join one or the other. There were negotiations with both counties, but for whatever reason, negotiation, King Queen stopped, the one in Hanover continued, and that's where we are today. Uh, and there was a phase into getting a system up, first phase to get us up and operational using entirely Hanover's towers. We didn't have any towers here at all, and then we put a tower to courthouse here so that we have a transmitter tower here. And then this phase where NASA is put towers to the county so that we would have better reception for fire rescue, uh, and, and law enforcement prepared the entire county, that's where we are now.
I'm not advocating changing anything, I just, I, I just want to look at what options are out there and if we don't have what I call the subject matter expert, we're at the mercy of contractor, the vendor, and they're going to tell us what they want to tell us. And I've worked with Motorola in a previous life and they are the best, they are the most expensive. So I just want, like, to look at options, not today, not next month, but down the road to look at what can we do, if anything.
Many localities must determine investing in a, in a sizable project like this, they'll probably be hiring consultants to, uh, assist you along the way, but it is, they are expensive. But they become your, they become your ally, finally become your voice and.
I think what Travis said, you just can't say, okay, today I want to switch and I never get mean today.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a whole lot of stuff involved.
I gave you guys a schedule. Uh, May is the fulling test, and then they're hoping to be up and running in, uh, late June or early July. With the leases.
I don't think, I don't know where this was at, but you were talking about Bay aging earlier, correct? And not Bay transit, what happened with that part?
Uh, I believe Bay A changed his level of funding.
No, but, uh, Bay Transit is the one I really, because remember they wanted to increase all, and my understanding is King Queen is not going to increase.
Yeah, they did a three percent increase due to the rise in costs of the transportation, yes, for Bay Transit, Bay A changed his level of funding, yeah.
And again, we're, or what does that affect us when one of them that's in the group does not contribute?
As I understand it, everybody has their own routes. Um, and then there's essentially three routes, there's the King Queen route, there's the King William route, that includes the town of West Point, and then there is the town of West Point like loop, yeah, there. Um, and so King Queen and not granting an increase would affect their own route.
But wouldn't affect.
I don't know, the way that I've ever always understood it, it would not affect ours.
Even our connection is lost. You know, they, they do, you know, I think you gather, pay extra for them, but they can go always lost.
Right, well, the re, I saw an announcement from the, the re-instituting fairs, I think, soon.
Yes. Yeah, I saw that.
All right, it sounds like it won't be.
I know, I don't say, I don't know about that route, but I know that the, the, the inside King William route is.
As we, as we try to legal them to produce more efficiencies in routing and dispatching, we just don't see any changes. We've all seen big old buses going past me, or maybe even going past me.
Has, it's, I love funny, I'm surprised we gave eight thousand twenty-five thousand, this is the first year we've ever given. Right, I, I mean, I remember when we first got them, their, their funding was twenty-six thousand dollars, and now it's twenty-eight thousand.
We didn't reach out and move.
Yeah, I think we did, and then remember we got. Yeah, right, we had a bunch of people who depended on that, I think we did a budget amendment and restored it.
Yeah, it, it was not a good decision that to have.
Next year when I send out the narratives, I think that's a great question for me to include, because they have to, they have a set of questions that they have to respond to us, the outside agencies, and that's, I think, a good question. How will it affect if, if the county is unable to meet the funding request? And that way too, I have that information from any of them, because you're right, that's a good question.
We're on this multi-year fictional, the, the animal shelter, now we're, are we, do we have funding going into that project?
They need more shelter for the, for the isolation.
No, for the, uh, what was it, uh, spay and new.
Then we cut that.
Cut it, okay.
Cause that was the new position that she asked for, I mean, I said, I could run that program without the new position. And she said no, and then when King Queen basically said that they're not going.
That's what I was interested, they weren't doing, you know.
It's a great concept, it's just.
Actually, I wanted to have to on this campus, but a lot of this stuff was based on direct and things, what if we, like I said, there's a lot of wish lists on here, if we took some of these things off, that helped us in?
It must, it, it's not going to help our general fund.
What about the stuff about the gas? If we needed that down the road.
Well, and that is, if you wanted to talk about that, what we could do, because we're trying to use the unassigned fund balance for one-time expenditures type thing, so it's, that's, if that's a thought, that we would reduce some of these expenses in capital and then talk about maybe using unassigned for the fuel.
Right. That's, in the past, we haven't done anything, and now it results in grandeur steam, we've got all this money, and I said, the people are still hurting, like ladies said, friends said, the people, everybody's hurting, we're giving two hundred and fifty thousand for a farmer's market, we're giving a hundred thousand for riverfronts, building plants, all this stuff, now it's nice, but I just don't think we need to put all that, that money into this now. But like I said, we haven't passed anything yet, we haven't gone, I don't, I don't think we're going to do it this year. We're always talking about that. If your question is reducing the rate, then, then nothing on here is going to reduce the rate. Right, now whether or not you think it's worthwhile to include in capital projects, it's not, it's not a matter, but, uh, great, great reduction, not to mention. Not that. So that would give us more in the unassigned fund balance, which is bringing up even more than twenty-four percent, which is too much in my opinion anyway, but there's nothing else we can do about that either, I said, can you?
Not give them a tax reduction, no.
Well, actually, we could, we talked about that one year, we can, but we, we definitely.
It's not a good idea.
It's not a good idea. But you can.
All this could be another year, what does the, the, the airport do for King? I know we're obligated to spend thirty thousand a year.
Can't get out of it, that's the problem.
Never seen.
Yes, you can.
Because we, we discussed this last budget session.
Is it a long-term agreement?
Somewhere.
Here by you?
So.
We can, we're obligated to pay that, we don't, we have legal, we have to pay the whole amount back. Well, we've got to pay our portion as a debt, right?
And it should be. No, no, it's about.
Repor that. Our portion?
Yeah. We went through this last.
That's why.
And we asked that question when they came back.
They said, yeah, we can get out of it, we pay that money.
Yeah.
Right.
But there's a page in your summer of the long-term debt, where, you know, I'll handle it, I might just.
Well, that's going to be, yeah, that's in the budget workbook.
Yeah, that's.
Wow.
I don't know.
No, it would jump our debt.
So basically, every year, the thirty thousand dollars pays off a portion of that debt.
Right.
Or was it directly related, thirty thousand dollars pays off thirty thousand dollars of the debt? Or was it just a percentage of the thirty thousand?
That's a good question, it's, is there a certain year where it goes away, is it for twenty years?
This is the first time I'm hearing about this, so I don't know.
I, I think it's a buyout, you gotta buy your way out. Yeah, I think, and the thirty thousand we're paying is operational to keep it going.
So we're not paying any of it down?
I don't think so, but she can ask.
Yes, there we can. I've been with best traps and I wanted to get out of that too.
I don't, I don't.
Nah, I don't remember anybody to get out of it, um. But, I mean, this was a conversation we were having ten years ago, we're trying to find, you know, ten dollars to cut from the phone line and we're still in the regional airport, so.
I wouldn't say they, they, um, actually have a new person manager over there also, so might be a good time to just kind of touch base.
We have a one, what'd you say?
Oh, okay.
But it's, it's really a more decision than you actually do anything to get out.
Yeah, cause they said if all of us agreed, all of us, not just King Queen, but all the people that were involved. Now, it, it does house, um, one of the helicopters, I don't know which one, now that we've delineated, there's several of them.
I thought it was mid-flight, not a minute after he's named another one.
And then there's a decent amount of traffic that comes in and out of that, now who that's supporting or who that's going to, is that recreational, is that supporting the mill, I know that when the, um, the veneer plant was operational, that they flew in on a lot, a lot of those inside of there, because I don't know how much of that is commercial now.
Does Marina use now?
We should be able to get records from the airport manager. Who's using it, that's crazy.
Last time I talked to Mr. Edwards, he told me that, uh, the mill isn't using nearly to this extent that it uses it, and that has lessened some traffic.
Well, I mean, that mill used to be the global headquarters of, you know, paper corporation, and now it's the mill.
Moving on. Yes, we added one last item for contribution to the volunteer fire EMS departments, to give a little bit more insight on what we presented over the last couple of weeks. Um, we've talked briefly about the radios, um, so Mankinik, uh, the county supports them forty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-two for their radios. Their capital, we give them thirty thousand. Their load up is three thousand four, three thousand four eighty. Uh, their operations, ninety-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven. Then Watfordten, we, we support for radios, twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-two. Zero for capital, zero for load up, and then thirty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty for their operation. West Point, we supply radios, seventy-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. We, they have requested fifty thousand for capital in FY twenty-three. Their load is thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-four, and operation three hundred and twenty-seven, three twenty-seven, eight hundred.
So what's the total amount for West Point?
West Point total is four hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight.
Is that something we do, is it something we have to do?
Yes, we do have to, that's state mandate, V R S, we have to, we keep that.
It was an unplanned.
Mainly.
Unplanned.
Yes.
Good point.
They're good at that.
That's going up over here. They they, I believe they picked up a portion in the early, early couple of years, and then it became a hundred percent.
Yeah, we base the the number, um, on the number of volunteers or part-time employees, um, the roster that is submitted by each chief, and that's where we come up with the cost.
Is it based on the qualified workers based on full-time, part-time, just to be a member of the organization, you get load up?
We get the the roster from each chief, and they they know what their their that list is for, and we go strictly by that list, and that's where we get the numbers from, we don't question.
Is it the volunteers only?
No, part-time too, and so West Point has some part-time employees, so we do cover their load up.
What about full-time?
They do not have full-time West Point volunteer.
No, but I mean, it, would we pay load up if they were full-time?
Yes, yes, we do, we have. We have load up on the sheriff's office and fire.
What is it, what is that, where where does it? On, I guess, what protection does it give the fire?
It's the line of duty, that's as much as I know, it's the.
Death, injury?
It's a lot of due to death, the death.
Okay, that's where I was getting at.
And they've been very flexible in recent years, and their definition of liability. If you're, uh, if you're a member, an officer, uh, they're likely to get the benefit from spouse, likely to get the benefit.
Is that something you get through the state?
Load up, we do it through VRS, yes.
It's all one big contract, we can't negotiate like we did with our.
And yeah, and the reason why we pay West Point's part-time load up is because they, they're nonprofit, they don't deal with VRS, so that's why.
All right, I think.
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Where she says no.
I don't get enough, but all right, man.
We are scheduled to do the publication of public hearing notice, uh, this Wednesday, March twenty-third, so we will have that published in the newspaper.
Oh, yeah, come back when you're working. Mr. Escher, if you have an opportunity to quickly jump in, if you have anything for us today, right?
No, Mr. Chairman, as a as a funding director, I'm going back for for hard work, um. You want to have a public hearing that's going to be advertised, they primarily based on the recommendation that county administration made on the budget. But you certainly have the opportunity to then, after that, if there's some strong feelings, the personal property issue could certainly want, that we may want to consider later. We will have it on your, on your agenda for consideration on March, uh, twenty eighth, but uh, again, you we don't want to take it that far, but you have until June thirtieth to look up this, but uh, first day of all. So. I wouldn't advocate it, hurry, but at the same time, if you're pretty certain as to which way you want to go, then uh it's always good to get the document behind us, and then we'll start planning for next.
I try to remain optimistic that things are gonna settle down. But we never know. Okay, moving into supervisor's request, Mr. Greenwood.
I said, I just think we need to go over that, somebody said they wanted to go on maybe you line by line, but I know we don't want to do that anymore, like, so everybody's just sort of assuming that everything's going through as issued, I'm not happy with it, so other people I know are either, we just keep waiting, pushing it down the road. But.
Well, we, this booklet gives you that opportunity if you go line by line at first, and I was, I was assuming that if you had something to hide, like, that we could bring it up and discuss it tonight.
Less than that, it wasn't on yours, that's what I would like to have done too, but it doesn't seem like it happens. So I want more cuts, I don't think we should be having a thirty-four, thirty-one percent unassigned fund balance and using the money to bring it down to just twenty-four. That's still way too high. I don't think we should be putting all this money, these capital improvements in the budget, I don't think we should be doing any staff increases or I think they should, school, we should get the teacher increases, the staff should be equalized with sheriff's department. Some of those major things need to be on it, but some of these other items need to be level funded, I don't think we should do anything extra, people are having like the question around, you said people are having a hard time, everybody on the board seems like that everybody's hunky-dory and everybody's living in wealth now. And I'm just barely making it, sales make a lot of the rest of the King Wayne citizens are too, so I don't know why, all of a sudden, this first budget, we're all of a sudden giving everybody what they want, and all this capital improvement stuff, and Travis saying that you don't want to go back to the day where we were, this taking a few more cuts is not taking us back to the day where we're using creditors to pay payroll. This is nowhere near, we have thirty-one percent in the unassigned fund that's, we're giving the schools all they want, plus an extra two hundred thousand dollars, but they're saying I don't think we should be doing that either. This is one of the first years we've ever given the schools a budget without questioning. So I think they should cover another half a cent, I think we should take another half a cent off the real estate, but that's just my opinion, so. That's what I wanted, that's what, this is our fourth budget work session? I brought this up every time administrator knows this.
Well, if y'all want, I thought this was just a request, but I've been on record probably for the last three weeks, saying originally that wasn't one of our options, not not for the, to hire new positions. And also the extra two hundred thousand dollar funding to the stores. And I said at the last meeting, in the request, that with what's going on in the world today, and even prior to that, inflation rate is at seven point eight percent. And who knows what it is now? And it's, and it is, Kareem, Miss Moncauzle was was dating on with it, people are selling, and and you know, and they are looking at the fact that we're adding five new positions. And we found a way to make it private too. You know, at this point in time, without. So anyway, that's that's my comments, I know that I spoke out of turn, but I've been on record for several weeks with those.
What's your recommendation, Phil, in the budget work session?
My recommendation was basically, I don't think it's enough support here, not to uh, fund the new positions and to not give the schools two hundred thousand dollars more, they've got seven hundred thousand dollars in their reserve fund right now. And everybody's struggling, including the parents of those children. I don't think it's a big ask, but you know, that's just me, you know, I'm driving, everybody's entitled to their thing.
They didn't ask, if you took another half a cent off the school budget, they'd still be, would be their budget, and it'd still be different money into their, their fund balance, it would be two hundred thousand, it still would be around fifty thousand. So I think it should be cut even more, so that there's none going in, but they wanted, but I'm not wanting to cut salaries, all the salaries that are bad, up down. But I just don't think people should, we should be deciding, taking people's tax dollars, putting it in a savings account, that's not it, it's our unassigned fund balance. For rainy day. It's like people need their own money. I agree, maybe we should look at the personal private tax, I didn't want to take it all personal private tax, because that affects the school system, but then nobody wants to produce the other part, real estate, because then that, like Chad says, it may mess it up, mess us up in the future because we may not have enough to cover things there, so.
How many positions, that's what requested, I know IT had one that we were not. Were there other positions?
This is a request that we were not.
I think it was the only one. Part uh, part recommendation is five.
Yeah.
Arts direction.
To dispatch.
That's right, yeah, animal shelter. Three positions that we elected to not. Yes, so. Mr. Scott.
There's not a person in this room, it hasn't hurt me in this speech about it, I mean, I'm not thinking about this. Yeah, there there's uh, there's certain areas of things that have been brought up tonight that I'm willing to compromise on, some that I think would be ill-advised, so I don't think we need another budget work session by any stretch, Mr. Chairman, but I think we need to actually put ideas on the table and discuss. And uh, you know, certainly, I think tonight, we we made good progress on the personal property issue, um it got some clear guidance, and I think consensus on what we want to do with that, and I don't think there's any disagreement on the fact that we want to provide relief from additional increases on the personal property tax relief side, and we just need to identify and execute most periphery mechanisms to do that. We can certainly discuss some capital, um, you know, expenses and whether or not we want to include those now, or or we think that it would be better for another time. You know, with some of these positions that we've got in here, um, you know. I don't know that we alleviate anyone's suffering by forcing suffering on stretch departments, um. But, um that again, um, that's just me being inconsistent. Um, whether or not there's room to take another penny off the schools, I think might be a worthwhile discussion, we just need to look at what those numbers actually mean, and how how close we're flying them to you know, territory that we don't necessarily want to mend if we do that, um. But I'm just not sure, as you know, especially, you know, we're creating a new department with HR, and um you know, creating a the the department of one with the size of an organization that we have, and expected to manage our entire HR load would be, um. I don't think wise, just what I know about HR management, you know, I think the sheriff is just trying to demonstrate without being um, hyperbolic that that there's a real need in dispatch here, and especially with the growth that we are continuing to see, that that situation is is already one that is tenuous and one that is going to continue to get worse if we don't do something to address it. So, you know, I I certainly have sympathy for the idea that we need to certainly be conservative when we're looking at these new positions, and I and I think have been, we've identified just now positions that we've not chosen. You know. It, we we've got a unique opportunity here to, I think, make progress on some things, and certainly, you know, we don't want to have a legacy of having gone overboard with it, and I don't know that this budget is doing that by any stretch. You know, we're we're reducing the rate, but again, I don't think a lot of other counties are going to be in that position this year, and we're coming into a reassessment year where where that rate's only going to get get lower to reflect an accurate assessment of the property values that we have. So I I think with with the ability to, um, you know, not just compromise, but actually find a consensus kind of ground on the personal property tax issue uh, and and then, you know, have a budget that we're already doing reductions in, I think it's a good, a good position to start from. But certainly, any of the discussions we would want to have, I'd love to see what people's ideas are, or heard. You know, those concrete productions and talk about them, and so you've laid out a couple of positions, um, you know, especially with the idea of, you know, taking more off the school fund, or the idea of the new positions, I can get somewhere with it, somewhere with you on one, I don't know if I can get somewhere with you on the other, but we can talk.
So you recommend we put a slot in next, one of these events to bring people's ideas, bring concrete support.
Well, let's get some background information out there in the meantime. You know, we know we want to, what's a, what's a penny getting us right now, that's in here, we can do the math ourselves, but let's just, let's make sure A, the schools know we're having this discussion.
So we have, well, Mr. Chair, for a penny, what are we speaking of with the concrete school?
Just instead of just if you, if you develop an argument on paper, or said that.
They are, they are, yeah, I mean, we can't come up with that, we don't have the numbers. The staff needs to come up with the numbers.
The argument is, is five new positions. And the economy being the way that it is. I mean.
We can wait till after probably.
There's no need in, it's not an argument, I mean, that's just, that's just my opinion.
We already know that, said all the argument I need to do, that Mr. Escher said, it'll still be completely cover the school budget and still leave them with over fifty thousand dollars in excess, I think it needs to be more than that, but I'm willing to compromise, giving them their full budget and fifty thousand dollars, but if we want to look at what the whole penny will do, like, which is three hundred thousand dollars, then maybe they're just, they have.
Is that correct?
Three hundred. I thought it was less than there.
Especially on the school.
If you didn't touch the school, they would have had five hundred thousand, they would have five hundred thousand. And we took a penny, we took, we took one cent off of the school, so that reduced it to two hundred.
So, yeah. I mean. Yeah, I I'm good with uh, doing personal property, I think it's something we, as much as we can do, I just and I'll be honest with you, I've had folks approach me and not one from a first dish, but I said, giving me a penny don't mean nothing. You you get five cents or more, then I'll listen to you, but a penny ain't doing a thing, make thirty-one, thirty-six dollars a year, I mean, three dollars a month. It's not helping. You know, and and that came from folks in the other district. But uh, you know, I mean, we can cut positions and everything off, I think we were financially able to to have them, and we, and there's obviously a need to have them. You know, as many years we could do. And I remember looking at how tight it was, and we've been doing the interest. As in the school, I I don't know what they plan. I wouldn't think they'd spend two hundred thousand on gas, but do they include increases for fuel?
No.
See, uh, they could easily eat up at fifty thousand if you got leftover, right there on buses, I'm sure.
That's just this year, it's like you said, they have seven hundred thousand dollars sitting there already.
There's a plan to use that for the.
Yeah, that's another thing, you shouldn't plan to use the money because we collected too much to begin with, we shouldn't have collected that much, so they add seven hundred.
It is, it does make it tougher, I have to collect it, to to, you know, uh, to liquidate back to the public.
Yeah.
To where it means something. Like I said, the only way I say is what I said, a penny doesn't, doesn't help them at all.
Right, doesn't help, but it does mean something. None of my constituents have come up to me and said, oh, Mr. Greenwood, I'm okay with you spending every money, every dollar you've gotten.
I don't say anybody do that statement, I'm just saying what that penny means to the public, everybody.
Yeah, they, they look at it like we do. And if they're struggling, regardless of whether a penny means anything or not, if they're struggling, they would want to know if Washington DC is just telling everybody that we have to be in this together, by the book. And then, that's true. And then we are, we have, we are. That that doesn't have good luck. If we're all in this together.
Right.
We 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 found a way to do, to do this, uh, I'm not saying this for, I'm just saying this is a wrong thing.
They are giving a lot of stuff, not cutting much.
I'm just trying to figure out when in this last recession, non-recession, recessionary cycle, local government gets to stop burying the brunt. And everyone else is, you know, larger, but uh, yeah, we want to enter this pattern, we're Empire Building.
Okay. I don't have anything to add, I think it's all been expressed, we're gonna come back to it. Let's have exercises, the force with different values. What other chance, is there anything, I think, I haven't looked at it yet, but I think it's a pretty full agenda, if you could consider anything. If you could consider anything that we can pull out. So now you're on to eleven o'clock.
We'll look at it. Was there anything else other related that you wanted to think up there? Besides personal property? We can do it later. They advertise them already.
Sorry.
I mean, that, so we'll be advertising, as I said, the recommended uh. Budget, but. But there, you can start adjusting it at any time. Sound like a position was. There's three of you that support Doc. Leaving the positions in, the positions would be out. But it's up here.
Right.
So if we're if we're just polling, so we know what we need to have in the document, I would support as the discussion goes forward. My position would be I would like to leave the positions in. I would be open to discussing what an additional payoff to school.
I can agree with.
Okay, don't talk, you have a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go into closed session in accordance with section two point two, page thirty seven, eleven, eighty seven, Dakota, Virginia. I move the board supervised convening, closing meeting. To consult with legal counsel, consultants and or staff on a matter of probable litigation which a county may be involved. Because discussion in open meeting may adversely affect the litigation position or negotiating strategy of the board.
Mr. Garber. Mr. Skalsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Mr. Chair, I move we're equal, being in a session.
Mr. Skalsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi. Hi.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve this all second.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Skalsky.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Chairman, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have more.
Oh.
Hi.
Oh.
Because I know somebody was gonna tell them, okay? No, next.
Chairman, I wish I could share.
Second.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Skalsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.